There we go.
Oh, Erin.
Yep, and Erin, you have the ability to unmute yourself, present, camera.
Erin, is there some place?
I am here.
I can see it.
I am here. Can you hear me?
He doesn't want us to see.
Mic check. Can you hear me?
All right. I will call the meeting to order, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hartman?
Present.
Councilmember Kerr?
Here.
Member?
Present.
Councilmember Parment?
I'm here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
All right.
Present.
This is number's present.
Thank you very much, and please record that Councilmember Parment is present, attending remotely. And I'd like us to stand in for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we have communications to council. All right. Trying to move these on real fast. All right, now we have the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda or make a change?
Sumoed.
Second.
To approve.
To approve. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Parment?
Yes.
Did you say aye?
I did say aye. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can anyone confirm that my microphone is working?
Yes, it's working.
Okay, thank you. I say aye.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can hear you, yes.
All right. Now, we go to communications to council, and again, I'd encourage anyone who would like to speak tonight to come forward to the podium. Please state your name, where you live, or work in Keystone, or your relationship to Keystone, and you can speak on any topic you want. You have three minutes, and then we have the same opportunity for anyone who's online, and if you're online, please raise your hand, and the clerk will let me know when we have someone who'd like to speak. Anyone here present would like to speak tonight? No? Anyone online would like to speak? Nothing controversial tonight. With that, I will close communications to council. The first item is a proclamation honoring past Councilmember Valerie Thisted, and with that, I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Okay, I'll read this into the record, too. Councilmember Thisted resigned her position at this meeting. She will be missed, so this is a proclamation, the mayor and town council of the town of Keystone recognizing Valerie Thisted's service to the town of Keystone. Whereas the citizens of the town of Keystone, Colorado have been blessed with the remarkable leadership and dedication of Valerie Thisted, and whereas Valerie Thisted has demonstrated unwavering commitment and exemplary service while serving as a key member of the Keystone Charter Commission, Incorporated Transition Committee, and the Town Council for the town of Keystone, Colorado, and whereas Valerie Thisted showed compassion, devotion, intelligence, and dedication in her service to the community, and whereas Valerie Thisted's tireless efforts, steadfast integrity and commitment to the people of Keystone demonstrate the highest principles of democracy and civic engagement, and whereas through her leadership Valerie Thisted has fostered an atmosphere of transparency, fairness, and inclusivity, allowing voices of the community to be heard and respected, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the town council of Keystone, Colorado do hereby honor and recognize Valerie Thisted for her outstanding service and invaluable contributions to the town of Keystone and our community. Further, we hereby commend Valerie Thisted for her exemplary leadership, commendable professionalism, and unwavering commitment to democratic ideals issued this night of December 2020.
Any comments from anybody? Councilmember Parment? I'm a council member.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. I think this is well said. Great job to staff for readiness. This is amazing, and I think that it is very well put, so thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Just a comment on not just city council, but town council, but she was very involved in the former elections and the charter commission, and very much a voice of the people. We really will miss her.
I'd like to comment as well. Valerie Bop Bop brought a very important voice to this community and a tremendous amount to this council and a tremendous amount of passion. I know I will miss her. I may not have always agreed with her positions, and I thought her voice in bringing the issues to the fore for the council were extremely important, and I also deeply appreciated the tremendous support she made to helping this town become incorporated, going through the incorporation process, not just that transition committee, but also working a lot of the communications and straightening those communications out so that they actually had a message that made sense for the community if we went forward. So I will personally miss Valerie, and I fully support the proclamation. Now, can I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Sumoed.
It moves, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I assume Erin said aye.
I said aye.
Yeah. All those opposed, motions carried by a vote of six to zero. Next item is the consent agenda, which has a first reading of the ordinance of 2025-0-15 establishing general funds and surplus funds, the meeting minutes of the August 26, 2025 meeting, and two other items for planning issues, TOK 25-13 and TOK 25-14, involving a special event signing permit as well as special event permit. Is the consent agenda acceptable?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'm not going to say it.
Okay. I'll second it.
Is there a discussion?
There's a discussion.
I would like to pull off the meeting minutes from the consent agenda so that we can really focus on how the conversation with the U.S. Forest Service was captured and put into the record, because I don't think the meeting minutes did an accurate job of conveying the level of frustration or public comment section accurately well.
Meeting.
The meeting minutes.
It merely said that the representative made a presentation.
Yeah, and I don't think it did an accurate job of conveying that conversation that occurred to anyone that would review the meeting minutes in future time. So if a constituent were to read those meeting minutes, in my opinion, it did not do a good job of accurately showing what happened in that portion of the meeting.
So discussion. So take it off. What do we do with that?
We.
So there's a couple ways that you can do this. You can make a friendly amendment to approve the consent agenda without the minutes. You can vote on the motion that is before you.
If I make a friendly amendment, would that be accepted?
The question is, does anybody object?
What changes you want to say? Take it off. What do we do?
Then we have, the minutes have to be redrafted or resubmitted to us, and I guess the question is what level of detail we're expecting to see.
So my, when I was thinking about this, my proposal was to send the meeting minutes back to staff to reevaluate that meeting and that section of the meeting minutes to see if they can capture it in a little bit more detail.
I tell you, staff has a hard time with that, because I think interpretation of what went on was, we try to keep minutes really to actions that happened, and in most minutes, this wouldn't have even happened, except we didn't have a workshop last time. We dealt with the workshop items in the regular meeting, so that's why they're even mentioned in the meeting. We do have video of this, though, and I just, if you would like, staff has a hard time making interpretation of how these minutes should, or what you're asking for. I feel you're kind of putting an unfair burden on our clerks, actually, to make interpretation of what happened, because there were a lot.
I would strenuously disagree with that assessment. I think it's incumbent upon our clerks to have the minutes have some level of reflection of the discussion that occurred. It doesn't have to be detailed, but even just two or three more sentences saying, "There was a great discussion," or "A great deal of discussion about topic X. There was much disagreement about Y, and there was public comments in relation to that level of upsetness." And I would strongly recommend that if there's a feeling that there's a burden, that AI is an excellent application here with some curation by the clerks afterwards.
My challenge is whether minutes are action minutes, not detailed discussion minutes. Councilmember Kerr?
Thank you. To that end, I have several times over the last year and a half looked at things that, in the minutes, that weren't fleshed out, but I recognize that they mentioned the topic and move on without saying he said, she said, or they disagreed, because we have a lot of disagreements and a lot of really fat discussions, and each time I have wondered, I remember, as our town manager just said, that we have the video available and online, so.
With all due respect, then why don't you just republish the agenda? If you're not going to get any more detail than that, because that's really the amount of detail that the minutes are offering, is what's on the agenda. It's like, well, we talked about what was on the agenda. That's it. Why have minutes?
There was a newspaper article about this that came out, and the best we can do is a sentence about what happened.
As I said, in almost any other meeting, there wouldn't be a sentence about what happened, because there was no action or decision. As the mayor pointed out, these would normally have been work session items, and our minutes have traditionally shown, there are newspaper articles about decisions we make, actually make decisions, and the minutes don't show the discussions or the conflict or controversy that happened. It just shows the action that took place on this subject, and in this case, we list the subject, but no action took place other than discussion. So it's, do you want us to readdress all minutes from here on and implement discussion?
There should just be, in my personal opinion, there should be more, and I'm looking at one of these line items. Lori of Loveland Village commented about Frog Trail. Lori of Loveland Past Village commented about the destruction of the Frog Trail and the frustration she had about the process that happened, right? And I'm not asking for a novel. I'm asking for...
You're asking us to interpret Lori's sense of frustration?
No, she said that. That's what I'm asking for, is to document what occurred.
So you want us to document, and in just this item or anything where there's difference of opinion and controversy going forward, is the question, because we try to keep it. We don't want to paraphrase people in our minutes, because if we get it wrong, then we've made a big mistake. We don't want to interpret their feelings, thoughts on something. In that case, we did it very wrong. What we wanted to document is the actions you as a council took based on those thoughts, opinions, feelings. You get to interpret those in your decision-making, but I can't imagine if we paraphrase someone and get it wrong.
All right, you have an offer of a friendly amendment. Do you accept it?
No.
Therefore, you can make a formal amendment, a formal motion. I would call it up.
I would move to remove from the consent agenda.
We'd like to amend his motion to remove from the consent agenda.
Thank you. The meeting minutes from August 26, 2025.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, I'll go back to, can I call the question on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
I have a second.
Yeah.
All right. Of all those in favor of...
Do we need discussion?
Would you like, I believe we've had sufficient discussion, and we understand everyone's position. If you would like to have someone go through the motion process, if we can, to close discussion?
I've said my piece. Erin, it sounds like you're a little delayed. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I stand by my previous statements that saying that something was said is so nondescript as to be utterly worthless. There should be at least some minimal qualifier so that we understood the nature of what was said. I'm not asking for a novel either, but a qualifying word, a descriptor.
At this point, I'll call the question. Of all those in favor of removing the minutes from consent agenda, please say aye.
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 I have one aye.
Didn't hear it.
Two. Aye.
I didn't hear it. All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. We're now on to the consent agenda itself. Of all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved.
And if I may make a quick statement here, the newspaper article was based on our video.
Yeah.
And discussion with our town clerk. So the fact that it's not the minutes, to me, the video is so much more important tool if you're trying to find the tenor of a meeting, trying to determine for yourself what someone is trying to say. The article wouldn't have happened if she didn't see our meeting live. This was an after effect. Communicate.
Thank you.
The next item is...
Your point's well taken. I would just say that if someone is simply reviewing the minutes, they might find a suggestion there that there's more to it, that they might want to review a video, and right now, there's so little in the minutes that there's nothing substantial in there that might suggest to someone, "I might want to review that."
We understand, Erin. The next item for discussion is Resolution 2025-31, a resolution of the Town Council of Keystone, Colorado adopting a penalty for and fine schedule. I'll turn it over to the town manager.
We discussed these fines at the last meeting, and I integrated all of your recommendations, council's recommendations, especially on the specific ordinance, well, on everything, specifically, I think, dealing with the noise and animal ordinances and issues like that. I've also added two sections. Section two, the town manager shall be authorized to add to the schedule any additional penalties. No. Section three, the town manager is authorized to assess penalties or fines in accordance with the town of Keystone, general penalty ordinance, and other applicable laws for violations of those provisions of ordinances not specified in the penalty and fine schedule. It's kind of redundant, because that is in the penalty and fine schedule, but it makes it clear to anyone reading this set. Just because there's not a fine listed, if it's against an ordinance, you can still be assessed. And then section four, the town of Keystone municipal judge is authorized to adapt, waive, or otherwise adjust any penalties or fines assessed for violations of town of Keystone ordinances. Are there any questions about this? Parking tickets. Our police department has actually issued parking tickets, but because the penalty provision is under state statute, they have gone to the coming court, who has refused to prosecute them at all.
Oh, really?
On what basis?
The town does not have a penalty schedule, a penalty.
Oh, for that reason, that?
Well, no, the county just timed it.
Yeah. Yeah, the...
So we need to do this?
Yes.
I do have a question on this question you explained, where basically you can put some fines in place for ordinances that don't have them spelled out directly, right?
Yeah.
And that would be your discretion up to the daily maximum or the event maximum of 27 and change, right? 2,700 and change?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything can be appealed.
But so I...
Judge.
Okay, so like, I trust your judgment, but if you all of a sudden go off and start saying that me looking at you the wrong way is a $2,700 fine?
That's not against, we don't have an ordinance against you looking at me the wrong way.
Okay.
So it's only if you break a law that we did specifically call a penalty for.
Basically makes it easier in the future for us to not have to go through multiple hearings.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I did have another question. I know we had talked about the littering item last time, especially with wrappers or bottles flying out of truck beds or something, what it was with Councilmember Martin and I going back and forth, but I was looking for that line item, because I know we had talked about editing it, and I didn't see it. So I probably am just blind. Could somebody point out which number that is for me?
It was specifically about trash, stuff coming out of a vehicle. Foreign matter on highway prohibited 1406.
Thank you.
I am here for you.
Very good.
Foreign matter, okay. Perfect. That's why control fine did not fine trash.
I remembered it was...
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I would just say, we're going to vote on this for a minute, but we did have extensive discussion about most of these items, either when we were passing the model traffic ordinance, or when we were passing the basic ordinance that the fines are related to. And so we specifically spent a lot of time and attention on anywhere where we're looking at something that's different from our neighboring communities and manager Crone, maybe you can remind us, there were a couple of things that we were a little more specific on. Or a little higher. I think one had to do with fire. We wanted to send a message about how dangerous it is. Is there anything else we should bring our attention to before we vote?
Wildlife refuse containers.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay.
So that's a unique violation for us.
Thank you.
And there were some of the traffic issues we either matched with Silverstone or the individual.
Yeah.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Higginson?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-31, a resolution of the town council of Keystone, Colorado adopting a penalty and fines schedule.
I'll second that.
We've moved and seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of passing Resolution 2025-31, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unless I'm correct.
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously, and the resolution is... The next item is the MOU with the, for the rural transportation authority formation committee, and I'll turn that over to the town manager.
As this was initially, we just discussed in the workshop, work session, it doesn't impose any legal obligations on us. You do have to appoint a council member to serve on the committee if you approve the MOU. It's your decision, but I would recommend that you appoint Carol, who's been going to the transit advisory board meetings and has been involved in this discussion from the beginning, if she's willing to do it. If not, I'd say draft Carol.
As long as there's a choice.
But, and any questions about this?
If anybody objects, I'd be happy to do that specifically, because we want a seat at the table, as this idea is fleshed out.
Just for the, as we talk about this in the record, the county is considering a rural transportation authority that involve all towns.
Regional.
Regional.
Regional, but involve all towns in Summit County, as well as potentially adding in communities outside Summit County as well. And this simply gives us the opportunity to participate and help shape that decision of whether to go forward with an RTA, bring a ballot to the voters, or to not choose to do that, and to shape what an RTA would look like if it existed. There's no obligation on our part to, for funding, and there's no obligation on that part for Keystone ultimately be a member of the RTA. If it did go to a vote, it would be up to the citizens of the community to vote to join the RTA. So this is a, as Councilmember Kerr has indicated, a, simply a seat at the table to help shape things and ensure the Keystone's interests are at least considered in the formation, potential formation of a rural transportation agency. So is there any other discussion? Councilmember Sullivan?
No, I'm just going to move. Move to instruct the mayor to sign the MOU for the RTA Formation Committee and include Councilwoman Carol Kerr as our representative.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the MOU and appointing Councilmember Kerr as our representative to the, well, before I do that, let me ask the question. Councilmember Kerr, are you willing to serve?
Yes.
Given that. All those in favor of approving the, instructing me to sign the MOU and appointing Councilmember Kerr as our representative of Formation Committee, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Thank you. Let's break it short. Passed by a vote of six to zero. And now we move on to the next item on the agenda, report of the town manager and the staff.
I do have a point of question or something, but under the fine and fee structure that we just approved, or excuse me, fine and penalty structure? That's where I saw it, too, and, okay. So just, I mean, for the record, right, the... So just, I mean, for the record, right, the developed view fee schedule was not included.
The fee schedule.
As a finer, perfect. Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item, report of town manager and staff. Mr. Town Manager?
I thought this was going to be quick and easy, but we'll start with the police. So fire danger is now officially moderate, and our fire restrictions have ended.
Tomorrow.
Earlier, Immigration and Customs Enforcement reached out to our chief of the police to ask to use the building police facilities for what they called a criminal enforcement. Our chief reviewed ICE's proposal and felt that it fell short of identifying any criminal actions that were taking place and therefore under state law and just common sense, did not allow ICE to use our facilities. That is still a limit of our knowledge, although there have been substantial rumors that very well may have a good basis that ICE is going to be conducting operations out of the Forest Service Office in Silverthorne. That, as I said, is a rumor at this point. This week sometime, it sounds like it may happen. All I know is they did reach out to our chief to use our facilities. We will cooperate. Our police will cooperate with ICE on a truly criminal matter. If, if there's a bad guy up here, regardless of his nation of origin, our police will help get that bad guy out of the community. But it has to be a truly criminal violation. So that, that's where we stand on that. And as I said, everything about ICE stationing somewhere else is simply rumor. I can neither confirm nor deny, and I have no firsthand knowledge whatsoever of that.
Mr. Manager, I have a question for you on that. When slash if there are ever federal, and I believe we've had this conversation before, but please just refresh me. When and if there is ever federal agencies operating in our county, do they have to report it to the sheriffs? Is it good practice that they typically report it after the fact, or what does that typically look like?
Traditionally, anytime federal operations happen in the county, all our police departments and law enforcement was informed and involved in the situation. They don't have an obligation to do that, and I'm, I've heard, I know for a fact there are many communities where federal enforcement has gone on without any forewarning to the local authorities.
If we were to give any recommendations to our community members about understanding if somebody is a federal agent or not, would there be any recommendation? Do they call the Summit County Sheriff's dispatch to get a, a yes, this is an agent, yes, this is, or no, this isn't an agent? Just so that our constituents are understanding if they are.
You should always call police if you questioning whether you're being pulled over by someone with legal authority. You always are allowed to do that. I know there are lots of good resources out there. On many of our community nonprofits pages, I can't tell you where to go to right now, but Google Summit County, what should I do if I'm pulled over by ICE? And there are lots of good, good analysis of your rights and what you can and can and should, shouldn't do. If you are being pulled over by a legitimate law enforcement agent, if you've confirmed it, you're being pulled over by a legitimate law enforcement agent, and you have a legal obligation to pull over.
Thank you.
Okay. Clerk, Maddy's back Thursday. She had a good time in Finland. I know she worked too much when she was over there, totally different times. Community development, the connectivity plan is that close to being finished. We'll be bringing it to you very soon, probably next meeting. And starting next meeting, you will probably start getting individual chapters of the comprehensive plan to review and weigh in on. So that's happening. They're keeping busy there. Public Works were finishing up the last of the road repairs before winter moves in. There's still quite a few, I know one big space is end of sort of Springs and West Keystone Road. We're going to fill and overlay that section of potholes there and a couple other places we're patching.
Is there, I'm not sorry, is there any plans over the winter if potholes decide to spur up or show themselves again?
Actually, we are in a shed. We're a little snow blower for our sidewalk thing, and we will also be keeping lots of bags of cold patch. It's cold asphalt that you put in a pothole in the last about three weeks before you have pothole again, but.
Popping it on the e-bike and.
Yeah, we'll pop it on a little gator that has the snow block.
And who does that?
That would be our public works department. Let's see, we're getting some, we're in discussions on what to do with meetings.
Coming up.
It's going to be an issue coming up. It's going to be. Finance, as you've seen, we're spending budget, budget, budget. Our July sales tax numbers came in. They were up about 4%, but in actuality, they were probably flat because our finance director identified a couple taxpayers whose money was being remitted to the town of Dillon and it should have come to us. So we got that money back. For the year, we're up 6% over our projections. STRs, the renewal process is going. There have been a few glitches, a few user errors, user problems. Make sure when you go in for your renewal, use the same email you used when you got the license. Otherwise, it might turn up a blank for you. Got the license on your different email. You saw the sidewalk is complete. Happy proud of that.
It's lovely.
I swear to God, every single person who lives at the ranch is giving me a call. Let's see, CPW, I had a good discussion on our trash grant, our bear proof grant. It won't, we'll get it end of December, beginning of January. They are on board with the idea, and I'll be bringing the amendment to the trash line I talked about. We right now require for commercial dumpsters that you build a complete wildlife proof enclosure. And I'm going to bring forth a proposal to amend it to allow, dumpsters still require enclosures. But if you have a bear proof dumpster like we have here, you don't need a complete wildlife proof enclosure. We can open up the grant money to help. The grant money for an enclosure won't go very far. It'll go a whole lot longer buying bear proof dumpsters.
When you bring that forward, could you maybe include that it's actually latched, right? Because I could have a bear proof dumpster as much as I want, but if it's open, it doesn't.
Latched and locked.
Mr. Manager, I would encourage you to review the videos of all of our work sessions and meetings around this topic because there was extremely lengthy discussion about why it was necessary to actually have an enclosure and not just a bear proof dumpster. And we went into great detail considering multiple aspects of that beyond, and in addition to simple wildlife protection. And I think that you were actually at the time on, on the side of us who are arguing in favor of maintaining the requirement for an enclosure, and I would continue to most strangulously encourage that requirement and not loosen it up for several reasons.
Certainly go back over that before I bring it forward. I, I brought this forward after my discussion with Parks and Wildlife and what they feel would be the best way to address human bear conflict. So I will review all those discussions.
There's, there's a whole manner of, just to summarize what I can briefly remember without going back and reviewing all the videos, is that there was much to do about noise appearances, failure to latch, difficulty in operating some of those dumpsters by, by persons who might be required to do so that might cause them to then circumvent.
Absolutely, Commissioner Parkman. I will make sure all of this brought forth in the discussion when, when we have it. We did get a grant application into the Colorado Tourism Office for $50,000. Who the heck has a Thursday as their deadline?
People who get a four day weekend.
I woke up starting the week thinking I had to write anything that in. So we'll see how that goes. I've had discussions with Colorado Tourism. And this would be basically to implement a lot of the recommendations that we're going to be getting out of the destination blueprint program that we're in. Speaking of destination blueprint, we're going to have a community workshop on November 18th. We'll be posting that and getting as much information out in as many places as we can. We felt there would be a good day because everyone's in town taking their last breath before Thanksgiving hits. But they've already got hopefully everything, all their processes in place. CML Mountain 2030, all coming up at beginning of October here. Make sure to register if you want to go to any or all of those meetings. The cast meeting is here, Mountain Town 2030, Breckenridge, and the CML dinner is at, in Frisco.
So the CML dinner and the cast, do they conflict or they're run after another?
The cast meeting is in the morning, CML dinner's in the evening, the cast dinner is the previous night.
Is there any opportunity, and I know we've talked briefly about this, and just with how Mountain Town 2030 and all these things are falling into place. Is there any opportunity for us to highlight a element of our town like every other town has done during cast meetings? Do we have any ideas?
Maddy is going to be talking about the use of, I know AI is brought up all the time. We're one of the few towns who's actually truly using it for a unique thing in our SDR licensing. So Maddy's going to give a presentation on that, not just AI is the wave of the future, but here's what we've seen in the AI we have built for our town. Let me see, oh. I talked about the nicotine NGA earlier. Vacancy, I want to remind everyone that October 6th is when letters of interest for the vacant town council position are due. Email them or any questions to clerk@keystoneco.gov. This one kind of popped up. Council members be aware, First Amendment auditor in Colorado Springs had his right to sue the town over violations of his rights upheld by the court. So it might inspire First Amendment auditors. Remember, people have a right to say whatever they want to say within a very few limits. It's important that we recognize that right, treat people fairly and equitably regarding their right to communicate with you.
I'm not tracking that issue. Did CML put something out or just see the poster? Okay, look for it. Thanks.
It might inspire.
So what I've seen about these similar situations is typically it involves individuals coming into public spaces or interacting with our police. Do you feel confident that our police department and/or town staff have enough training or understanding of this that it would not open us up to liability?
Yes. Although.
And then we have to remember again, we invite the public to speak. They can say just about anything they want to, and then we will listen politely.
Okay, and I guess next summer, we are, you're seeing the budget, I want to put out a few infrastructure items that we are going to be working on over the winter. One is the stop, bus stop at Razor Drive. And regardless of how CDOT's intervention, there goes. I feel it's important for us to extend a sidewalk to the bus stop and rebuild that bus stop in a safer manner from the Razor Drive intersection.
We're here.
And we're going to put the solution for tennis club road and Highway 6. Actually, the curbs there are a big mistake, and the reason we have ponding, I don't even want to say puddling, ponding in the winter is because of that. Now that we have the sidewalk going down, it's my plan to get designs for handicap receivers on both north side corners for the crosswalks there. And then we'll put in a pan, a concrete pan rather than a curb and gutter and hopefully deal with the issue of that. So those are my, my two emergency things that absolutely have to get done, infrastructure next year, I feel. And that's it for my report.
Any questions? Senator Kerr?
Two comments and a question. My first comment is about how effectively the town staff has worked in partnerships, and I'm looking at both the first public sidewalk in Keystone, which is a win, and then secondly, the initiative and partnership that produced all these piles around here. I do have a question. What is the long-term plan for them?
These piles will sit here, it's somewhere between three and five years.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Fire department will come out in the winter and.
Okay, cool. Can I just finish my last thought? Sorry. You mentioned taking on speed limits at our last meeting. What is your thought for one, on how we would do that?
I'm going to workshop it, and it's basically, you can't do anything about the speed limit on Highway 6 without working through CDOT. So it's identifying other roads. I think there are two or three speed limits we need in this town. Cedar Roads, Main Roads, Montezuma, Soda, Soda Creek Road might, Silver Ridge Road might have slightly higher speed limit than, say, Wild Irish Road, but just picking a few. Their recommended speed limits in the model traffic code, I feel some of those are way too high for what we want.
Okay, so we will workshop that coming up. Okay, next one.
Communities have like an entrance when you get in or assignment near the entrance that says unless otherwise posted, X is the speed limit.
Yeah.
We don't have that currently, right?
We don't have.
So unless it's posted on a road specifically.
Well, no, because there is under the model traffic code speed limits for certain types of roads identified. But it's just better to have our own speed limits posted.
No, no comment unrelated. Great article in the paper about bear and your comments, and I really appreciate all the effort that the staff and you have done to move that ahead. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I was wondering, and this is going back to your STR renewal process, where you were saying different emails could cause a delay, I hope. And I'm just, where I'm imagining, right, is if there's a property manager who was here last year and they have since left the company, they, if they use their email, then they no longer have that email, right?
And we've reached out to everyone. Yeah, we put together kind of a FAQ and a roadmap on what you need to do and if you encounter these problems. This is what you need to do, and if it's not solved, this is the number you need to call.
So if a property manager has gone through the long thing that I just explained, they will still be able to renew it just with extra steps?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I would echo Councilwoman Kerr's. Okay, thank you. And then I would echo Councilman Cur's positivity around the first sidewalk. I was wondering, have we considered putting like a small little plaque, something to like denote that this is our first major infrastructure project?
Would you guys like to do a living?
You joke, but yes.
I was going to propose that earlier this week.
I think the fact that we spent, you know, a lot more than I was hoping for and that was shown by the amount of questions I asked you during that meeting to prove it. But spending nearly 700 or nearly $800,000 on a project is a substantive one, especially for a town of our size. And so I think there should be some common circumstance.
I'll, I'll, you know, you find a good time and get piece of paper here, take some pictures and I think a really cutting would be a wonderful.
I think it's a great idea. And for the record, I just want to make sure that not all of that money was our money because of our partnership. So.
Thank you. Do we have a final accounting yet on the cost?
It's just over, it came right in at budget.
Because it was no more than contract.
I think there was, I approved $2,400 change to add more road base at 100.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Next item is report of mayor and council. Citywide council have the report? That's from the clerk.
So council member Sullivan and I went to coffee with council. Was it just this week? It was last week. Time flies. We had two, two people we've never met before, which is always exciting and three people who are returnees and it's also exciting. Just a quick recap, we had a pretty lengthy discussion of options that maybe we'll, we'll face for with the USPS. You can talk about that?
Yeah.
We had a recommendation that we send, the town send an announcement about the bear proof containers, not only to property management, not only to KOA, but to each HOA. Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Like it? Okay. Because we want to make sure everybody gets the word.
Only question would be whether you can get the KOA and get the each HOA's email.
I have a bunch because I do a bunch of things.
Yeah.
And we have also reached out to the threshold of us.
Building on that, would we be able to for the areas that don't have HOAs and have a lot of single family homes, level in past village, can we send mail just to those like 20 addresses?
Yeah, we can, we can, we'll push this very hard. Town schedule, I might delay it a little bit. So we coincide with our state grant. We can't spend the money until the grant paperwork has been signed. So.
Yeah, but at this point, I think we're concerned about residents before we get to the, and.
Well, residents too. I mean, it would be nice to have the state pay for that.
Of course. Do we have more than two takers by now?
I don't, I don't have to ask Maddy.
Okay. Two more points. We had a recommendation for fall cleanup. There was some interest, but this is kind of late to plan it. So put it on the, put a pin in that. And a recommendation to address watering policies. And this person was noting that some towns will identify, you know, in drought periods like we've had, that you, if you, you know, one, one day or the other, I don't know the details.
The proper place for that.
That's what I'm asking.
The water, Saker Water District, they have responsibility and control.
Okay, so we don't, the town doesn't need to do that.
The towns that.
Do we?
Water system.
Okay. Okay, good. That answers that question. I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Just an update on USPS. They're pushing back pretty hard on additional services, cluster bucks. I don't think we're going to have any movement on that, potential movement until we get a new bus master. But that said, Senator Hickenlooper's office is on board. They are, they'd like to push for that. They're pushing for it as well. But they're also positive on the zip code possibility where they said that it's, you know, it's past the House, it's in the Senate. While USPS is fighting that one as well, they do believe that there's a better than 50% odds that that will be approved. Fingers crossed.
Thank you for working that.
The other reports, from the, from the mayor's standpoint, again, on the public outreach side, we've had a lot of HOA requests for speakers and I'm looking for some volunteers if I can get them. The first one was a late one that came in this weekend and that's on Saturday at 11:00 AM, Tenderfoot, Tenderfoot Lodge Lobby. Is there anyone available who could do that?
Same time you're doing.
Be able to. I will confirm offline with you if I can. You said 11:00 AM.
11:00 AM.
Say again that, the date?
The 11th or the 13th, which is the.
13.
Ah, unable.
So I will tend to drop you down for that one. I think Maddy is, John's looking to ask Maddy to attend that as well from the staff standpoint. The 20th, we have the KOA annual meeting. Dan is going to be there and John is going to be there.
I signed on.
And Carol.
Carol's going to be there as well.
I'll be there as well.
Who's going to be there?
That is it.
There will be three of you. We have to.
I'm assigned.
That's me. Business we can have.
And Dan and I are doing an update on the presentation to bring it up to date to reflect things like the sidewalk has been completed and the, and also that the paving has been done and some other items. So we'll get that in this week prior, I guess this week.
The. We have one, I'm sorry, the 21st, Sellers Creek.
Yeah, I'm moving through, not done yet. Soda Spring HOA is on the 20th as well. That's my HOA. So I'm, that's why I'm missing the, that's why I'm missing the KOA annual meeting. The first one I've missed in 15 years. And I'll, to save, since John's going to be at the same time over in, with the KOA annual meeting, I'll handle both sides. It's small HOA, only 20 units. And I've done this before with it. Soda Spring 2 is also on the 20th. It's going to be a virtual call at 1:30. I'm planning on attending that. If anyone else would like to, they're welcome to. I think you're planning on attending too, John. And there, there again, about a 26th member of HOA. On the 21st, we have Sellers Creek. Dan is planning on, on attending that, the townhomes, and I think you're on the tap for that too, John?
I signed on for it as well.
John, Carol as well. On the 27th, Slope Side at 3, well, let's start, at 9:00 AM, we have Quicksilver in the Dillon Town Hall. Is there anyone that can attend? I think John's going to be working with Maddy to attend that as well as the Slope Side one later in the day. Is there anyone who can attend that on the 27th? The first one is at 9:00 AM for Quicksilver and the second one is at 3:00 PM for Slope Side. And I'm out of town as well. They're in person. The, yeah, in fact, I will be in Nashville. So is there anyone available?
I'll check my calendar and follow up.
Follow up with me on, I'll notice from 27. That's what we have right now. So far, the count of HOA meetings is at 13. Means we're probably getting to somewhere in the range, given the attendance we've seen, 400, 500 property owners in Keystone.
And we are not able to host HOA meetings here because, I know there's a reason, just could we?
It's not our building yet.
Okay.
We need, we need to do a policy.
Our property management company is able to ask the Keystone Center if they could host this?
They could. And the, and the answer would probably be no. That's, that's their, they will only allow someone to use the building if they have a direct connection to the building.
So I think once we have.
Which will at least.
This building, we absolutely should draft a policy. Law and nature ways, has to be careful, has to be done by our lawyer because we don't want.
Church service.
We don't want the freaking Illinois Nazis, but we, your Blues Brothers quote there.
I hate Illinois Nazis.
At the mayor manager's meeting, just a couple of minor items. Have you noticed in the Summit Daily of this week, there was an article about the, of their plans for considering consolidation of schools as well as potential of closer closures and bond issues. They talked a little bit about that and basically it was the same stuff that was in the, the article in the Summit Daily. Magically, it actually trapped. And also Congressman, Nogus's staffer indicated they're still getting pressure from the Republican side on the sale of public lands. So the resolution that we passed was timely and hopefully will help in that process.
And I would just like to again emphasize that resolution allowed or supported the sale of public land with extensive local input.
Right. So that's my report. Is there anything else? Is there any other business? Other matters? Councilmember Martin?
On the October 14th meeting, I'll need to attend remotely.
All right. Please send me an email.
Yes.
Anything else? All right. The next item is a potential executive session. Councilmember Martin?
I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Section 4, subsection B and subsection E and L to discuss matters that are subject to negotiation, develop strategies for negotiation, or to instruct negotiators and to receive legal advice related to the purchase of a building and property.
Second.
It's been moved. It has been moved and seconded. Of all those in favor, please raise your hands.
Aye.
All those opposed, I believe that passed unanimously. As Mr. Town Manager, do we have a TV in the other room?
Because.
Can we just put this whole laptop in there and keep it?
All right. So.
Whatever laptop this has been. Should he call in? Could he?
He can call in.
Yeah.
It might be best to end the meeting. It might be best to end the meeting completely. So there's no, like notes being taken.
Yeah, exactly. So maybe you should just, Aaron, if you can call.
Aaron, I'll send you a link to a meeting with me and then just join the one-on-one meeting and I'll fill my laptop.
Perfect. Will do.
All right. The motion of then has been approved and we are moving into executive session. For the public, there will be no further action taken after the executive session and no other business to be conducted. The town will adjourn the regular meeting immediately after conclusion of the executive session.